The committee did meet on November 30th to talk about suggestions for revisions to the Code of Student Conduct and just to remind the board at this time, we did have many stakeholders at that meeting and who are a part of that committee. There were school representatives there, school board member, Mr. Dodd was there, district departments and administrators, school resource officers. We had students, we had parents, and Mr. Bradshaw, our school board attorney, was there as well. You should have in front of you two resources to guide us through this presentation. One is the current Code of Student Conduct, and then you should have a handout if it consists of seven or your pages. If I can bring your attention to the handouts, I will share with you and list out what revisions are being recommended to the school board today. And I will just move forward with the recommendations unless there's questions or clarifications. The first recommendation for proposed changes is on page seven, under Roman numeral three, tardies and excused dismissals. The recommendation is to remove the verbiage within a nine-week grading period for excused tardies and early dismissals. They want to track the whole school year, just like absences are tracked.
It was page one.
Page one of the panel.
Got it.
I probably should have clarified that, page one of the handout, page seven in the Code of Conduct.
Got it.
Thank you. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the second recommendation, which is page two of your handout, page 11 in the Code of Student Conduct. This particular information we are wanting to add to the conduct, it is not currently in there. It's health information. We'd like to add the paragraph regarding health screening that pertains to grades pre-K, K, 1, 3, and 6. The reasoning the recommendation is being presented is that we have to provide parents with information on screenings, and most importantly, we have to provide them that option of them opting out. We do provide parents at the beginning of the school year with a letter, but some parents say that they did not receive the letter, so we want to make sure we have another means to provide parents with information on the screenings and the opting out.
Let me ask, do they, if they're a doctor, to get screens done and then give you the information or is no information given to you if they don't do the school screen?
If they choose not to do the mandatory school screenings, we don't have any way to get any information if they've had that done at the doctor talks or at the health department. The only thing required, Ms. Powers, is those documentation for immunizations and a first-year physical entrance into our schools.
I'm assuming there's a little vision problem, you wouldn't know at the screening.
Well, that's a good point. Teachers are very aware of students who might have trouble hearing, might have trouble seeing the board, they see if they're squinting. If they are, they do do a referral to our nurse, and then our nurse calls the parent and emphasizes that concern with them at that time.
On the last sentence, I think, the last sentence within is one word, I believe, right?
Yes, it is. I'll make that a correction.
I'm actually surprised and disappointed, you know, Ms. Powers got shot.
Oh, I usually do, I tell you. I didn't finish that last sentence.
I think you're gonna have a run for your money now, Ms. Powers.
Good, I love competition.
Okay, I'll move on to page three of your handout, page 26 in the Code of Student Conduct. Under due process procedures for suspension and expulsion, the recommendation is to add the additional verbiage in red at the bottom. The current language we have in there is straight from statute. And Mr. Bradshaw thought it would be best for all parents and schools and students to know the whole part of the section of the Florida statute.
We could do a lesson practice, though, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Wasn't there a change also on the number one, trying to be on C? Is that, is that, is that a change?
The verbiage?
Right.
That is what's currently in the code at this time.
No, I think we did, we took out that section on a copy vote before the superintendent or designee. On page 26. I was trying to remember, did we take out the, did we replace it?
Yes, we added more to that. We took it straight from statute as per Mr. Bradshaw's recommendation, rather than just a copy will also be forwarded to the superintendent or designee. He recommended we use the exact language from statute.
Were you saying that under the second one, it should be a one instead of a two or under C?
Under the original text, it should have another line that says a copy will be forwarded to the superintendent. We removed that sentence, and then the revised text, the number one, and the other one says number two, it should be number one.
That's reasonable.
Yeah. But you're correct, the original text said a copy will be forwarded, and under the new text, it says each suspension and revision will be forwarded.
That's two for Doug.
And I do see the, I can't tell you how many times I've gone over this term. Thank you. Best to catch it now before it goes to the printer. Are we okay to move on to page four? Thank you. Page four of the handout, page 27 in the Code of Student Conduct. I'd like to add the additional language in red under the letter F.
It's really helpful presenting it like this, the original and the revised.
Page five of your handout, page 29 in the Code of Student Conduct, under transportation. There are two suggestions being presented today. The first one, under the first paragraph, just to bold the word student, I'm sorry, the word suspended and the word expelled, just to highlight that point. Sometimes parents and students don't see that, and just to bring it to the attention, especially when APs talk to their students about the Code of Conduct, they want to emphasize the possibility for misbehavior on a bus that they could be suspended. And then the other part they'd like to add is about pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students to release at bus stops. I'll give you a few minutes to read that.
That's already on the transportation.
And that's a practice anyway, again, first.
But again, unfortunately, schools are faced sometimes where parents want to know where that is in writing, and they don't always have that form readily available that Miss Farmer provides to them. And it's for their safety. Page six of your handout, page 29 in the Code, also on the transportation. From my eyes, it was easier to provide on the landscape paper than having you switch from one page to another, so if you would just turn your page, it's not that it was a misprint. There are several suggested changes on this page.
Do you think we should, maybe a shout?
Yeah.
Or how this, because normally we shout, but maybe it's a, well, that's okay.
Wait, do you say respect the driver?
It's not an option.
Right, it's not an option.
Because I think that's, it seemed like, like you said, the legalese is, you shall do that, not they, respect.
Our students will.
Will, yeah.
But we have the shall, it isn't legal.
But we don't have everything. I mean, we could say students' bus respect the driver.
Or will.
Shout works for me.
I'm okay with shout, but I saw that too.
No, it's not, you know that. You just chide me all the time, I grant you.
My only question might be on that is, there is a lot of shouts, which is fine. I didn't see any may's, meaning students could do such and such. My reason for that is because it has transportation instructions or instructions for students riding the bus. I know we've already addressed possession of electronic devices in, on what would be page 23, section Z, and it says, "Students may possess these devices on a property, blah, 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 and on a school, at a school bus stop and bus." And I don't have strong feelings on this, so this is just a suggestion or question is, would that be a place to kind of reemphasize that they may at the discretion of the blah, blah, blah? And again, I don't have strong feelings. I just was thinking, there were so many shouts, I didn't know if then if somebody says, "Well, I can do that," no, you may be allowed to do that if that's permitted, not necessarily that they have a right to do it. It's a privilege, if I recall, and it's bestowed by the bus driver.
Falls under the title of instructions for students riding school buses. Would we want to put that under instructions?
Well, that was my question, because we said all these things that they were expecting them to do, and I didn't know if there's any rule that in essence, they're not entitled to. And again, I don't have strong feelings, but I didn't know whether the board or even Miss Farmer had anything that it allowed anyone to say, "No, you're not entitled to that," so it's a privilege. That's really what I was trying to.
We have that in this.
It is there. It's already there, I just didn't know if it was, if it was, if it was good to do redundancy or whether it was unnecessary. And again, I don't have strong feelings.
I just don't know if it appropriately falls under, "These are instructions for students riding buses." I don't think that's considered an instruction. Maybe the pleasure would be, we should put it in there.
You know what, maybe this is the question, has that been something that's been pretty much, is the dress drivers and transportations worked through?
Initially, it was an issue, but it recovered where it's at in the code, so.
Oh, never, unless the board changed it.
You know, command is written, shouts, it's something too, why they have this one?
I would, yeah.
I wouldn't have. Very religious.
Well, I just, I mean.
Because it's legal and it's stronger than law.
I think that personally, there's no mistake in fact that you're not going to throw the thing at a bus, out of a bus, or inside of a bus, when you say you shall under it. And it's, there's no wiggle of argument.
Sorry, James.
I could soften it.
I like King James.
If you're worried about the word shouting in your summer time, a suggestion would be students while riding a bus shout, and then you go small, like A, respect the driver all the time, since it only got one shout.
No, I'm making this a, yeah.
We have 13 bus commandments.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And let me back up for a second. It was suggested that we highlight on the page before the words suspended and expelled because parents won't read this, so.
Are we highlighting?
We're bold.
That's bold.
So.
Just have your print.
Because they can't, they can't see it or read it or do whatever, so.
No one's using this.
This does not lead them down when they come in there. As part of the argument that we heard at the committee, this, the conduct committee, was that they come in there, if they don't see it exactly written in there, then they will start.
They're attorneys.
Yes.
I mean, they want to be attorneys.
Any other questions? Page seven of your handout, page 30, the infamous student dress code. Always good conversation. Just one addition on that page, the revised text. They'd like to add spiked earrings to the list of some other accessories that they're asking the students not wear. Safety issue. Any questions?
And spiked earrings?
Well, when you Google it, I mean, they got some things, some things that comes out of our, three inches.
It's not loud. No, no longer. And the last item, I want to pay your attention on page eight of the handout, page 30 in the current Code of Student Conduct, also on the dress code. It's the infamous stick figure that has caused some problems with interpretation. And number one, schools felt if we took out the word when standing, because the stick figure is not a standing figure, that they feel there'd be less confusion. And then number. And then number two, under the clothing, we've had some issues where students are wearing some jeggings and leggings, and the appropriate top attire is revealing too much, so the suggestion was to add that they would cover those jeggings and leggings with approved clothing.
Is, am I correct, that does not just, that includes all parts of the clothing, not just the top? I mean, it would include, it would include these leggings that aren't leggings, or these jeans that are, they're saying they're jeans, but they're really leggings.
The problem that you have is you start inserting, you know, leggings, bicycle shorts, fabric shorts. The parent wants to see where jeggings are. I didn't know what jeggings were, that's what I'm looking for too, but apparently it is basically yoga pants made out of some type of very thin jean material over the pocket. So it just doesn't qualify technically as a yoga pant, it's a jacket, which is a jean.
Well, you wouldn't be allowed to wear pajamas.
No, man, I think that's not a jacket, so they were getting, so it's too tight.
And I think you're correct, though, some people have said, "We don't say you can't have yoga pants in here," and that's tried to be argued, but this was another aspect. Yeah, there was a good discussion on that.
I'm better not.
It's a cycle right now, it just seems like, that seems to be an issue on campuses.
And same with the jeans.
It's been an issue in our house, I can tell you that.
They fall, they fall into the fashion industry and what popular at the particular time, so, and then more.
Same with the jeans, huh?
It's kind of like a tight yoga pants, it's something that's kind of over the jeans here. I'm assuming that they're not.
And with the exception of that they're very tight, you would from a distance think they're jeans, except you can clearly tell that they are a little more than fitting in jeans. And they're, they're, they're not appropriate. They're not what we would think of a school appropriate, I think, so I think this is, this was a very good fix there.
Thank you, any other questions for the board? Great, thank you.
Great job, Mr. Bell. Was that your first one of this one?
Yes, it was. It was my first one, and it was Doug Connor's last one.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so he made sure to let us know that was his last one.
Interesting conversations. Good afternoon, you guys ready for me?
Sorry, I'm sorry, it's probably years ago.
What I'd like to do today is do a little refresher on the middle years program, IB program for middle school level. Then I know that one of the main topics is to look at those surveys, sort of review those together, and then talk about potential costs, and then get your feedback and possible direction. If you remember in 2013, the idea of a NYPD or a middle school IB program came out of those town hall meetings, met with many parents, I think it was at La Canto High School, where the idea of the middle years program, that parents were asking, "Why don't we explore that as a district?" And from there, the following year, Mr. Clard took myself and a couple other people to visit a private NYPD program, private school, and also we visited a public NYPD program. And one of the biggest revelations was it's a whole school approach, it's not a school within a school, because I think when we initially started to explore it, we all assumed that it would be a school within a school, and we also thought it may be for yearly student, but we found that it's for all students. So from that point, we began, continued to explore this year. We had a town hall meeting or a presentation at Curtis Peterson, and I know some of you were there, and we gave information, we took a lot of questions from parents, and I know Mr. Clard created a website, which he had a survey that parents could access, and also they could get information. And, you know, tonight we will, or this afternoon, we will look at those survey results. Big thing about the NYPD program, the basic curriculum components involve inquiry, action, and reflection. So most of the teacher's license are involved with inquiry, action, and reflection. Inquiry meaning trying to stimulate student excitement and getting them to question and to learn through exploration, and then once their learning takes place, applying that learning. So that's one of the big components that we saw when we visited school, is applying that learning through project, hands-on activities, so that it can be a deeper learning. And then the last step would be teaching students to reflect and be critical of their own learning and be critical and of where those materials are coming from. The NYPD program has eight subject groups. We'll go through some of those. You have Language A, which is your typical language arts class, it's also referred to as language and literature, you know, listening, speaking, reading, writing, viewing, presenting. The language acquisition, that would be your foreign language, and students have to have three years of the foreign language in a NYPD program. Your mathematics.
Does that be the same language?
Same language each year? I think it does.
I think it does, it is.
And then mathematics would be your typical mathematics courses. Your arts, which would include visual art, media, drama, music, dance. Your humanities course, also referred to as Individuals and Society, which also includes your social sciences. Your design or technology course, you know, digital design, you know, product design. And then your physical health and education, you know, sort of self-explanatory. And then your sciences, you know, encourage students to investigate issues through research, observation, and experimentation. And also, a major component that has an impact on NYPD school is the interdisciplinary teaching. That is strongly encouraged, and they strongly encourage common planning time for your core subject area so that they can do interdisciplinary units. This was the original timeline that we, that Mr. Clard put together and proposed closer to the beginning of this school year. I think we're a little bit behind the timeline, but if we decide to move forward, we can potentially catch up. You can sort of see that March would be the time to submit an application for candidacy. And then the 2016-17 school year would be the trial implementation. And then at the end of that year, if we're on track, we would submit an application for authorization, and then you'd officially begin in 2018.
You said March, you submit what?
You submit the application for candidacy in March.
So then, does the school need to be selected then, and then the application?
Yes, that's, that's where in our original timeline, we had put that we would determine the middle school by December, but again, the, you know, timelines are, sometimes get changed, and so we have, there's been no determination.
But it's okay still to submit in March, because you're going to go ahead and determine which middle school or what?
If we decide to move forward, we would have to select a middle school and then do the application. And that's why we're saying we're a little bit behind. It would be a very quick turnaround to make that decision and to get an application together by March, but I'm assuming that it can be done. Any other questions on the timeline? You know, if you, if you look at the IB research and you look around for research on the internet, you know, it shows that students typically at the IB schools outperform non-IB students in critical academic areas. You know, the foreign language is a big selling point for the NYPD program, and it also says builds confidence in managing students' own, own party. Those are some of the pluses for looking at a NYPD program. And just as a conclusion of this PowerPoint, this gives you the website that Mr. Clard put together where the parents can go and find information and actually take that survey.
Can you put that back up for me? Never mind.
I was trying to think of the percentages, but I know Derek Bittner sent an email out talking of twice the number of students graduate from college, IB students. Now, the IB students, I think it's like 48%, 27% graduate who are not IB students, but it's twice the number if you're IB students, they graduate from college.
And as rigorous as the high school IB program is, that would make sense. If you go through the whole school, the high school IB program, you probably will get through Looking at the survey results, see that we had 44 people respond to the survey?
And how many?
Well, you know, that night, we had, if you looked around, we guessed, estimated Well, you know, that night, we had, if you looked around, we guessed, estimated anywhere 100 or 150 people attended that night. And then it was put on the website, and a call-out was asked to be made from all the elementary schools to make the parents aware to go on and, and give their input, so.
So we have, just for rough, rough numbers, that we have approximately 3,000 middle school students?
Yeah.
So out of 3,000 students, we got 44 responses. And I just, I just try to make sure I'm, I'm not wrong in that thinking. Oh, it could be the...
Yes, elementary as well. The surveys went down, I think we asked that all the way down to second or third grade, they could also...
Probably the most were people that went the nights that you had.
Yes. So if you, you know, looking at that, you know, the first question, I'm interested in my child attending an IB middle years program. It's 86% were in favor, and then you have roughly 14% that were not.
You know, and we can use these figures, but, I mean, the sample size is, is you can't draw conclusions from the sample size of 44 people out of this district. I mean, I don't think it's fair either way.
If you want to prove it. It's a small sample size.
And some people will argue that small sample will, you know, prove a broader, disprove a point. And I agree with you. I think if it's that small, that doesn't convince me either way.
And it always, it's, and it has nothing to do with this, you know, even when we do surveys in schools, and if we had 5% or 10% of, you know, the group would do a survey on, and you would, I've always, always, yeah, but does that really mean we, particularly if it's something negative that we get feedback on, does that really mean it's negative? Because most of the people that are happy with it will respond.
That's true. And you send out 2,000 surveys, and not, one school was at 1,200. And you get like, you know, at the most, 10% of 1,200 back there. And you're thrilled.
We were thrilled.
Oh, you're thrilled that you got that many, and you think, what?
So in this case...
That's because you didn't give a party to the class that probably...
That is the truth. If you want to get, makes a difference.
If you want to get results.
Feed them.
Exactly.
So.
So, I mean, I'll go through these, and we all realize that it is a very small sample. And, and the number of people that responded, I guess that also gives you some, some information as well. If you look at, we're the biggest group that responded, which was 10 people. From Crystal River Middle School was the largest responding group, and then followed by others.
Who goes to Crystal River, forget that.
And since the closer they run to La Canto through the IB program, the more they respond positively.
What's the child, what grade is your child then? Sixth grade was the largest with 11 people. And then your seventh and your fourth graders were, were next. I attended the IB NYPD Town Hall meeting. This is only saying that 16 of the said yes, and then 28 of those said no. And that's, that's interesting, because you would think the people that attended that night would have gone home and completed that survey. But we did have paper cards, and I'm not sure how Mark tabulated those or if he included those in the response also. I reviewed the Citrus County IB NYPD website for resources. It says most of them had, so 89% said they were, 11% said they had not.
That would lead me to believe that a lot of them were involved with IB in some fashion previously.
Well, that's what I was thinking, closer to La Canto, it seems like responses.
And then, again, this is just another summary of the first slide. So I'm interested in my child attending International Backglory Middle Years Program. 86% said yes, and 14 said no. And again, that's based on the 44, 44 responses.
Did you say, did we not have two notes of this that we did at your two schools? Or was it just one?
Yeah, we just did one. We initially were going to do two on opposite sides of the county. And then we just decided that Curtis Peterson, one night, might suffice.
That's fine. I just was just curious.
When we look at estimated cost, the first year, the authorization fee is $15,000. And then thereafter, it would be a $10,000 annual fee, not the $15,000 initial authorization. Training is about $1,250 per teacher for training as needed. And then you have, you probably may have a teaching unit for part-time coordinator, because it does spell out in the paperwork that you must have a designated coordinator, and it lists out a lot of their responsibilities and what they need to be a part of. So looking at the list that they need to be a part of, they would at least need a little bit more time, more planning time to be a part of that coordinating position. And then the transportation cost. And then anytime you move to a new schedule or offer new courses, you may have some, some costs involved in that as well. But we wouldn't know what that is until we get there and decide how that implementation may go if we decide to implement.
Transportation could be in both directions, because we're not just taking somebody maybe out of zone and bring them to that school as much as we may also have kids that are zoned for that school that don't want to be part of that.
Correct.
So, I mean, usually, we're just kind of talking one way. Barely does magic and finds a way of getting there. That could be a big number.
So that's NYPD in a nutshell. And so at this time, comments, feedback, direction from the board would be appreciated.
A good point on the fees, again, on the estimated cost. You know, and I mentioned this to you a while ago, but when I went on the website, you know, there were assessment fees for the middle years program. And that is how much it costs to take an assessment in order to get the middle years certificate. And I know that you all hadn't, hadn't, weren't informed that at the schools you visited, but I think you had contacted Mr. Bittner.
And, and he believes it's only for the five-year programs. And so that would not necessarily apply to a middle years program, six through eight, since it's a three-year program. Those costs, exam costs would not apply to that program.
Is there a five-year if it's like through one...
Like, I think if you go six through 10, that could be considered a five-year program. And I, I don't believe they're talking about, there's a primary years program also. I don't believe that, so it's that, yeah.
Well, not knowing for sure. I mean, according to the website, you know, it doesn't explain that. But, you know, the seven assessments per student, discounted subject fee is $432. The E-assessment is from $51 to $72 per person, if they were to take that assessment. E-assessment, candidate registration fee is $51 per student. And then the E-assessment, individual subject registration is $72 per student. And if a student in the middle years program wants to take all seven E-assessments, it's $432 is what, is I'm reading on the website on how to become an IB school. Now, you know, again, whether or not we would have to do that, I guess we'd have to find out for sure, because that could add, you know, 20, 25,000 a year to the program, depending on...
Yeah, well, we'll definitely have to double check. I, Mr. Bittner texted again. He said, I'm pretty positive we don't have to do that, he said. But we would investigate that a little bit further.
And would there be a returning of money from the high school program?
No, there's not, not a return on the, on the dollars for like passing an IB exam.
You're talking like $25,000, is that a year?
Well, that depends. Yeah, that depends on the number of students who would be taking the assessments. But in order to get the middle school year program certificate, according to the website, they have to take those tests. Now, maybe students in the middle school program would go that route.
We need to examine and find out what rules are...
And I, I think, you know, the other, the transportation cost is to me a big, huge question mark. We just don't know what that number would be. And I'm, you know, the issue is, is it could double. If you have 100 kids, for some reason, they didn't want to come in, or even 50, I bet you're going to find there's twice as many that may not want to go to that. My biggest question all along has been, if this were a school within a school, such as we can operate currently at La Canto High School, I would be very favorable to going down this road. It very much concerns me with the idea that we would be required to be a whole school. And while I completely feel like a lot of those courses and requirements of IB, because huge fan of IB, huge fan of what Derek Bittner as a coordinator has done, the success that we see out of that. And I, I think it's a great program, but it's a program that allows people to opt into. In this case, we would be forcing people to opt out of that. The ESE students and how they're serviced. And I, and I know you guys looked into some of that, so I recognize, and I don't want to devalue that. I just still think that it is too new, even to those whole schools approach, to know what are the challenges with that. And, and I do think that while we are very successful at La Canto High with the IB program, it's still based in a percentage of students that get to opt in. And those people have buy-in, those families have buy-in. There is some negativity about IB as a philosophy of teaching. I don't share those beliefs, but there are those that do that. But I, we would be telling roughly, as we have there, at, at, let's say, La Canto Middle, we probably have 1,200 stu-, no, maybe not.
Roughly, if you want roughly 800, so more like 750.
So we'd be basically telling 800 students, this is a mandatory program. I also think just philosophically, one of the challenges I have is, and we were talking about a mandated program, is there's a difference between an IB approach and, for example, a STEM, or I actually prefer to say STEAM, because I'm a big supporter of arts as well. Where you're talking about hands-on learning and exploratory. IB, while it does have elements of that, tends to be higher-rated and academic theory. All very positive, but very different approaches. Many students, and again, I, I individualize this, but students with ESE challenges or with even hands-on learning readings don't do as well with academic theory as they do in having other options. So that's just one more member's concerns about the whole middle school approach to the program. And again, we talked about some of these initially, but that's just my...
Would you go back to the drawing that shows the circle of the different things in IB?
While we're doing that, I'd like to say that I agree with these two gentlemen that 44 is not a fair enough sense of meaning of broad assessment.
Hey, if you look at the survey here, and what IB is basically about a way of learning, I firmly believe that the basic principles of learning are the ways that one should learn. The best programs you see for the, for the small children are all based on this exploratory, hands-on, on learning how to integrate all different subjects here, science, math, social studies, seeing everything as a whole pattern. So for me, there's absolutely no doubt that the approach to learning is the approach that should be taken with a student. And I can even attest for 100 years ago, when I was working with kids who were behavioral problems and kids who were very high IQ. And both of them approached, with this type of approach, to teaching. And I will tell you, no matter how bad the behavioral problem was, it worked, because you were telling a child how to sort through, how to deal with, how to integrate things. They appreciated, and the students who were the very top students, very high IQs, also appreciated how to do it. So, and I think actually, the truth, every student does, because it's a system. It's like riding a horse. You know, you know, to put your foot in stirrups when your leg over, you do not start running, jumping, jump on the saddle and hop in like they do on television. No, it's an approach, and one that works, it's the way the mind works. And that's what has always impressed me most about the program, is, is that you learn the way the brain is ready to process.
And for years at the middle school level, we, we had that team approach, more of the interdisciplinary approach. But as, as acceleration requirements change and whatnot, we sort of got away from the team approach, because we just couldn't, couldn't do that, so.
And I think when we look at La Canto's IB success, that team approach, that philosophy, interdisciplinary, that grade level, meetings, I mean, and I have said this, I don't think that approach, as Ms. Powers, I think, largely was saying, I don't think that approach is only success, making IB successful there. I think it would make any program successful, you know, in, in any approach. I do think, though, if I'm, I had trouble as an, as an ESE student, learning English and reading English. If I'm now required, and this is a big component, of adding a language, and I'm already now, as an ESE kid, in intensive math and intensive reading, and now I'm going to have to add a language to this, I, I see some real issues there. I really see some real curriculum challenges. And you add to that, that we're being asked to have more recessed time, more PE options, more career options. And, and they're not just things they want us to have options, they're going to mandate them if we don't do them. I just think we're, we're, we're taking on a lot. And I'm just not sure we're, we're showing we have the need for it.
And, and I see it, I'm from what you said, I think it's a, it's a freeing up, release of the child to be able to learn as the child should learn. And I don't see it as a negative. For instance, the language, the child beginning, let's go back to the elementary grades, beginning at that level, even two years old, beginning, the language, I don't, I don't know what level it is, comes easily to you at that age.
Their four-year-olds speak Italian and Anglais.
Oh, they do. You know, my grandchildren speak different languages, because they started very young doing so. And children who are put in a position where they need to learn two languages can learn, but I don't care what their level is, they can learn different languages. So I think it's a freeing up of the learning ability of the child, rather than a restriction. And I think sometimes in school, we restrict.
But our statute requires us, in the cases of intervention, they're mandating that we have to do those, so.
Ways to do that. I, I remember teaching the kids at a summer program where we did poetry. And they, they had to play this game where you'd say, okay, write a poem in a jocade trimmer. And then brace down, writing all this, and I couldn't believe it as a teacher. I mean, the kids think this is fun. I admit, they're, oh, I want to do that, you know? But it's, it's the approach you take to learning with the child. When it's exciting to you, it's exciting to them. With the IB program, it's an exciting way to approach learning, so the child gets into the mode of excitement.
Well, I would like to say that I too feel like there's a lot of value to the IB program in the fact that what we offer at La Canto High School, if we could do that at another one of our middle schools, to have a school within a school, an academy, like Mr. Kennedy, I believe there, I would have no issue with that. I do not like the fact that we have to relinquish control of an entire school, one of four middle schools in our county, to the IB curriculum. I think we are not doing, I don't think that's right by the parents or our students. If there was a way that, you know, parents could opt into a program, I wish IB would reconsider this total school concept. Because if we're going to be looking at that within the next 10 years at La Canto High School, that's going to put us in another quandary on decision-making. Because can we, do we have enough students to house an entire high school of IB? And that's according to Derek Bittner, that's coming down the road. So I hope IB would reconsider this issue with public schools, because there's other public schools in the state other than us, other than our district, that is going to be in the same problem. And so, you know, if we were to take, for instance, Crystal River Middle School, who had the most responses.
10, wow.
You know, they had 10. But if we were to say, we want to make Crystal River Middle School the IB middle school, and now the parents are going to come in with a lot of questions, and even though I know we've said it's not that much rigorous, so that's what, what you told me, it's the middle schools.
Yeah, to see...
Rigorous is the high school program. But, you know, there's going to be parents that say, hey, I don't want my child to be in that. And now we're going to have to bus them to, I guess, La Canto Middle or Citrus Springs Middle. So, you know, I have some big concerns with it. I have big concerns with the sample size. And so I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not convinced right now this is the way we need to have...
Let me ask you a question. Could you take, say, say La Canto Middle School? Have La Canto Middle School A, IB. Canto Middle School B, not IB. Just do that.
I'll split the hands into two facilities?
It's not a school, middle school, it's just an A to B, or whatever you want to call it. But it's the same school, everyone's going to La Canto Middle School, whichever middle school, really.
middle school it is, but you're maybe calling by a different name, A D.
There was a conversation about that, and it sounded like I B was catching on to that.
I'm not sure if they would allow you to do that, but you'd have so many challenges, because you'd be running two different schedules within one facility, because you have the eight courses that are required in one half, and the other half are going to be offering something else, and to make that all flow.
But all of us, those are the teachers, we've taught at schools, we did have two schedules filled, you know? And it is a challenge, but you can do it. So I'm wondering if we could, if we could do it at a middle school.
Yeah, different schools. One of the things, and I don't think this, this wouldn't be an option for us, but I talked to someone from Anity County, and they opened a N Y P middle school, but they, they selected one of their poorest areas to do that. But what they did is, is basically they took all those students out of that school and sent them somewhere else, and then only people that wanted to be N Y P applied, applied to that school, and then went to school there.
It's a magnet school.
Yeah.
That's a common approach that we've had. Our consultants in the past have told us, in areas where we have declining enrollment, that's something you do.
Let's explore some of those thoughts, so we know what we're doing, what questions are being asked and what answers we're there for.
Okay.
And I'm not opposed to, as Ms. Powers, to say, listen, I don't think we should necessarily, I'm saying, take it away and never proceed, I just, I don't think the sample size is large enough.
Nope.
I don't, I think that I still have some major questions as to how it would be executed. And then we do have to, then really, then we get into, what is that cost going to be? Because unlike La Canto's, where we have a cost, a revenue offset that comes back to us, this is a total outlay. With our other programs, we have, you know, Ms. Noble's does an amazing job in showing us, you know, in all different schools, we get these certification monies coming back to those schools, and they help offset some of those costs.
I just remember, and I'll not reflect on the past, but I remember the school that I was talking about, the biggest problem we had at that school, because we were doing I B, but we had the very same principles, the integration of different subject areas, exactly the same, just not called I Bs. The biggest problem we had was the students kept turning up at school earlier and earlier, and they wouldn't go home. They kept staying later and later. And I said, that has to be one of the best problems you ever have, is students coming early and don't want to go home. I said, before I exit the world of education, I'd like to see that happen again. I want to see a place where that happens again. And, you know, at La Canto, with the I B program, it is happening a lot, and I'd like to see, in the middle school, if you can have a place where the students have their fault, they want to go to school so much. I like that.
Okay, if I'm hearing correctly, I'll, we're going to go back and explore, are there any other type of options, doing N Y P, if you split a campus, we'll just look in that, because I know that's something you asked about, look at maybe other potential options of school within a school. But as we do this now, we realize that we won't be putting in an application in March, and we won't be starting anything for, for next year, so.
Right, because we want to be sound, solid, we want to go in knowing people there are wanting to wrap all of this concept, we want to be on solid.
And I think the sample size, as you guys have pointed out, 44 people only responding means that there's not an overwhelming desire, because most people, when they respond to a survey, they either respond because they're totally in favor or they're totally against it. So I think that it gives us a little piece of information by looking at that. But we will continue to explore some of these options, you know, for that advanced kid, or even continue to, you know, keep that in the, in the background, potentially in my P program for the future, if something, you know, changes, or if I B changes its position on something, maybe we'll look at a school within a school. Anything else?
Great.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you, Strobe.
I get so excited when you start talking about these, I guess I want to go back to the first grade stuff a little bit.
Well, I just have to say too, Ms. Powers, you brought up some great statistics as to, Mr. Bittner talked about the success of students as they go into college. But I have to say again, I have to continue to remind ourselves, what our data has shown us is that 70% of our students that are graduating are going on to a university or college within one year after graduation, and the majority, I mean, almost 90-plus percent, over 90%, are graduating with a four-year degree within five years. That's pretty amazing success, and as we all know, that's a community that has 7% that are economically disadvantaged, so I think we, because we are.
We're behind in the progress of making it successful.
And that's what I was just going to say, I think that these are all of us trying to be successful. Speak of another successful person that makes the.
Good afternoon, thank you for your time. I just wanted to share some information, get some direction from you, let you know what we would like to do to proceed if you're in favor. We had two capital purchase ideas coming into this, this year, this budget year, in addition to purchasing replacement school buses, which we try to do every year. That was upgrading our cameras and potentially acquiring GPS. So we started with the cameras and getting solid pricing, because cameras are a very valuable tool for our administration in investigation, in deterred bad activities on the buses, because students know they're, they're on camera. We currently have 120 older units. The older units tend to fail more often, and you'll have to understand that technology's coming a long way. When they first started coming out, it was essentially a DVR unit that was constructed for a home or for a classroom. You're putting on a bus that moves a lot, vibration, you have dirt, you have dust, that kind of thing, so those units tend to fail. In addition, the way that you pull the video is that you literally remove the DVR from, the hard drive from the DVR, you bring it into an office, you download that video, and then you take the DVR back out and you put it back into, or the hard drive back out and put it back into the DVR. That also causes failure, that in and out of the, of the hard drive. So one of the things that we've looked at, that we would like to proceed with, with your approval of course and input, is updating the failing units, which are 120 out of 188, to make them also compatible with a wireless access point. So basically, what that means is, every camera can be accessed from a, from a district computer with, with access, with permission and access, as soon as the bus pulls into one of our three locations. So there's a wireless access point at each location, there will be two at Crystal River because of the way the layout is. And then I could literally sit at my computer and pull the bus video, which means less in and out of that hard, actually, there'd be no reason for the hard drive to come in and out. So that in and of itself prevents those failures. But one of the biggest features of that system is that it also supplies you with a DVR health check. And basically, what that means is the system itself, or each unit, alerts you if it's failing or not operating properly. So you know ahead of time that that video system needs to be repaired, or replaced, or whatever the case might be. As it is now, what happens is a school will request a bus video, or a parent will call with a concern, and we go to pull the bus video, and we find that it hadn't recorded in several days or several weeks, whatever the case might be. It's very frustrating, very disappointing, because you don't have that video evidence to look at, to help you with your investigation, which is a very, very valuable tool for, for myself, for school administrators. And it's very frustrating when you have to call them and tell them, I'm sorry, the bus, the video wasn't recording. Of course, then we get it fixed and we repair it, and it starts recording from that point on, but it doesn't at that point. One of the pluses to this system, the wireless system that comes with the camera upgrades, is that it does provide you also with historical GPS. So what that means is, we can find out what the bus did after it comes into the lot, and it's parked where one of our wireless locations is at. You can't, it's not live GPS, I can't look at the computer and see exactly where the bus is right this minute, but once it comes back into one of our three locations, I have that historical GPS data.
You can prove where it's been.
Yes, yes. Which live and historical GPS both have some similar benefits. They both give you improved routing efficiency, because you, because you can look at what the bus actually is doing versus what you have it scheduled to do. You can also save, you can also look at fuel savings because of your reduction in idle time, you can see exactly when the bus is running, and, and you can make changes and tweaks to those things that, so that you reduce that idle time and save that fuel. You can also potentially have payroll savings, which is one of the selling features that GPS providers promote, because you look and see what, what your employees are actually scheduled to doing and what they're actually doing. So when they're actually pulling out, when they're actually at a stop, when they actually get into the school, and reverse in the afternoon. You also have the ability to monitor the speeds you've traveled, that you've activated your stop arm, and you've actually made the bus stop. It can show you when you've stopped, and you can tie it into a lot of features on the bus. Both historical and live GPS have those same features. One, you can just access immediately, the other you access basically after the fact. Now, there are concerns with only having historical GPS, because there's no live vehicle location. So for an emergency, I still won't know exactly where a certain bus is. I won't know where it has been until it comes back in. Obviously, we would all love to have that, but that's not part of historical GPS. There's also no ability with historical GPS to automate student tracking, there's, or attendance, there's no, you don't know exactly who got on the bus. We'd still rely on our manual system that we use currently, which is basically a roll call. There's also no ability with a historical GPS system to provide directions to a driver or sub. There's also no ability to attach it to a parent's, parent access. They wouldn't have any access to know whether the bus was coming or how, if it was delayed, that kind of thing. And there's also no ability to provide Wi-Fi access to students on the bus, which is part of the new technology coming out, where they would be able to actually log in on their iPads and do homework or whatnot. That's not available with historical GPS. The concerns we have with live GPS that have come up through our research are integrating with our routing software, because not all of them will do that. Some of them are proprietary, if you have their GPS, you have to have their routing software. Or they tie it into their student attendance piece, and you have to, you have to basically ditch the software that you have and purchase new software, purchase their software. Not all of them, some integrate, but that's a concern that we have, and that's something that we have to keep in mind. The biggest concern that we have is there are three methods of student attendance, of taking student attendance. One is an ID badge with either an RFI reader or barcode, similar to what we, we have on our ID badges, or a student number ID entry. So basically, a student gets on the bus, and they have to enter their five-digit number, how many digits it is. And then the other is entering a tablet by a driver. Those all come with their very own concerns. If you have an ID badge, someone has to manage that ID badge. Who creates it, who generates it, who replaces it? And they, they can get expensive if you're having to replace them frequently. The student ID entry on a keypad has its own concern in whether a student will remember their ID number, how long does it take to, to enter that ID number. I will tell you, I spoke with Felicia County, they have had both. They have the ID badge and are almost finished transitioning to a keypad entry, because the ID badge was cumbersome, time-consuming, and expensive to maintain. They said both take about the same amount of time for students to get, get on board. But they also did say that some of the drivers do not like the keypad entry, because it seems to take a long time for students to enter their, their ID number. So those are some of those concerns that we have. My concern with having a driver do the entry on a tablet, it's really no different than them taking roll, it's up, it's up to them checking the right box and submitting the right information. So you're still open to that human error factor. What we would like to do, which we would bring to you for approval at a later meeting, this is just for discussion, for your input, is to proceed with the camera upgrade purchase, which would also get us, most importantly, limit the number of failures, and even more important than that, is that it would give us the DVR status health check, so we would know that a system is failing before, before we actually need the video, we can go repair it before that happens. And it would also provide us with the historical GPS, so that we can start to pull some of those figures and, and use some of that data to our advantage. Then we would like to still continue exploring the option of live GPS, visiting some of those districts that have it, putting out potentially, or ultimately, our own specifications in a bid request. I don't know that there's one vendor that has everything we want to do, but we won't know that until we get out there and put that out there. So any thoughts, input, direction from the board?
I was going to ask, what does the sheriff department have, with their GPS system?
They have that through their mobile desktop computers, their M V Ts, the laptops they have in vehicles. My question is, I thought we were approving $500,000 for GPS, number one, and then any extra for camera upgrades. Now, it seems like, it seems like we've changed gears here.
They've been lumped together since the beginning, the camera upgrades and the GPS.
I thought we were estimating about $350,000 for GPS, and the rest would be spent on on-camera upgrades, is that not correct, Ron?
No, we actually came in with a lower number on the camera upgrades originally, but once we went through a thorough inventory of all of our units that are failing and older, that price did go up, and we also had to factor in some, some support network purchases for the district, because they wouldn't be able to support the wireless connection.
So just doing some quick math, it's like we're $180,000 over, over, $180,000 over budget. I mean, I, I thought the goal, I thought everything, the pitch was for GPS and for student tracking. And so, I mean, I'm all for better cameras, but, you know, I'm all for better cameras at schools too, so I'm a little bit concerned, because I wasn't necessarily sold on GPS for buses, but we agreed that that's what we were going to budget the money for, and now, now we're not even going to get GPS.
Both, both were lumped together from the, from the start, and they were about equal parts.
So we're going to spend $448,000 and not have GPS?
We would have historical GPS, yes, we would have historical.
I know, but you remember even in your presentation, was you going to be able to better manage routes and cut down on gas consumption?
Which, which that we still can do with historical GPS. The disadvantage would be that we don't have the actual vehicle location at the time, and you can't add the student attendance piece without the live GPS. We still can use that data for all of those things that we want to do, because you can use that with historical data. You don't have to have it right when it's happening, you can have it after the fact.
But the student attendance issue is totally off the table, that, I mean, this $448,000 isn't going to address that. I know Ms. Balfour was concerned about the kid that falls asleep on the bus and all those things, you know, but I thought that that's where, that's what I thought the direction we were going in, I missed that, or?
The only way to do that is if we're going to either require students to have ID cards, which you can't even buy a metric or something. So you wouldn't have to require that every student bring an ID card. La Canto High School tried that two years ago.
Right.
I will tell you, it did not go over.
Oh, I agree. I, I think that's going to be.
The only way to do that, with that being the attendance piece, either that or a student's going to have to enter in a five or six-digit code as he or she gets on the bus, like they do in the cafeteria, which is going to be a classic nightmare.
And, and Mr. Dodd, I know, I can appreciate the thing, I, I, I did understand it this way, but because I understood it this way is why I had some reservations at the time to say, might not be bad for us to re-look at this, because I'm not sure, I think the majority of this board, we, all of us here, were maybe thinking, I think that what you heard is probably what was being thought, but not because I think they intended to do anything indifferent in the presentation. I always was under the impression the student attendance piece was a separate piece that was over and above what was going to, what was in the $500,000 budget. It was something that we could connect to at a later date. And that was, that was one of the things. What I think initially drove this was a board member's concern at that time, that new drivers, substitute drivers, had a way of getting a GPS unit, and it started off with getting little GPS units, seemed to be the conversation. And then that allowed to, well, what we really are needing is a whole system upgrade, which includes the cameras, and that would allow us to incorporate GPS. And that's kind of, I think, how that, that conversation, I thought, grew.
That's correct.
The, the challenge that I saw at the time was just what you were saying, and that is, we have a camera challenge, and it's not just on buses, buses being one of them. And by the way, if you haven't talked to a student lately, they will tell you in discipline which cameras are the good cameras and which ones are not, because one is crystal clear that they did the error wrong, and the other one, they're like, I'm not sure that was me. So we know.
And your parents will say, that's what I found.
And it's exactly. I remember once you saying to his father, just recently, said, the father said, well, are you sure it was you? He's like, oh, Dad, it's as clear as convey, it was me. And so, it was, it's clear that we, we have camera issues. The GPS system, this is my feeling. I, I believe that Maryland has been outstanding over the years. I believe that Maryland has been outstanding over the years in telling us what our district needs to do to continue to operate efficiently and save money on routes. If this is something where the cost savings is likely to be recognized over time by improving routes, and I will tell you, I think you've done an amazing job using the limited technology that you have, but there is only so much you can do with the tools that you have to work with, then I am still willing to have this considered. But I would agree, my concern is that if this is something that we're not seeing, that there's gonna be as great a benefit, but there could be, hey, I love the idea of students having Wi-Fi access and doing all that, but we have probably some greater needs right now that we are gonna be facing in a capital side. One of the issues that I think that is, I think at least the question is, if this doesn't provide live GPS, am I correct that what you're saying is, there is no driver routing information? If you're a substitute driver and you need to understand where your route is, it does not address that at this moment? It doesn't mean it could, we can't add it, but it doesn't?
But all of those are add-on pieces.
They're add-on pieces, but the cost doesn't include that in this $448,000.
That's correct.
The other issue I would just say is, even if at some point we were willing to consider a student attendance piece, does that even migrate with Skyward, which is an issue that we currently have?
And that's a point I would like to bring up. If we're gonna go to live GPS and to incorporate the attendance piece, there's a lot of considerations we have to take into account there. First and foremost, does that software, that's gonna be an add-on? How does that integrate? Does it not integrate? But also, if we go to the badge concept that Maryland shared with you earlier, then we have to look at staff. What staff member manages that? I can share with you that our switchboard operator Cheryl Roach manages our employee badges, which is somewhere about 3,000, including substitutes, and that's almost a full-time job. If we look at managing 15,000 for students, certainly we'd have to bring to the board some considerations as far as adding a staff member or two to help manage this. So there's a whole litany of things we have to take into consideration when we start going from passive GPS to active GPS. This is the, I guess, the gateway to eventually getting to live GPS, if we can work out a lot of the logistics. And this is like the foundation for a building block to make getting to that live GPS. But there's a whole lot of things we need to discuss before we get to that live GPS feature that I think we're discussing here today.
Is this the system? Is this for sure the system?
Does it have the capability of doing it?
No, no, I mean, like, because we're going off of Brevard's bid on this for this particular branding system.
That's because that's currently the camera brand that we have. And if we change brands, we have to now change software to read the video, software to download the video. We'd have to basically start completely over.
Same question with Thomas Ray's, that same budget. Perhaps there's another brand that could do much more than that.
And there could be, but if we switch camera vendors, then we also have to, we incur additional costs for the software to download the video and any hardware associated with that. So we already have that.
But is that, and I'm sympathetic to that, but just as sometimes those things are aging and that may not be the software that's necessarily as ideal for today's standards, is that still where, three years from now, we wanted to be with that same brand?
Because currently, we're with them. They do provide us with upgrades. So if they upgrade their software, they upgrade it for us. And each year that we purchase new buses, we purchase it with that equipment already on it. Any upgrades come with that. The problem with starting completely over is, you start completely over with, and we certainly could explore that. And you can add live GPS with the current camera vendor, and you can ultimately add student attendance. I don't know that at this point, they don't have the availability to add directions coming to the driver. I only know of one vendor that I've been able to find that does that, that has a tablet that provides actual directions back to the driver. And again, that's a whole nother cost on top of the basic GPS.
But that would be available if you went down to, and I think Mr. Dodd was saying, $600 and something plus thousand dollars? Would, I mean, if for some reason we spent that?
That's not available currently with the camera vendor. The camera vendor does not have the tablet feature that provides the directions for the driver. There's only one company that I've found so far that has that, but they also don't have the keypad entry, they only have an ID badge entry. So finding all of the pieces is what, together, is what's difficult. If we decided to go with the keypad entry because the student would just have to have their ID number, or even the driver could have their ID number, that, they don't all have the, the company that has the pad, the tablet, doesn't have the keypad, they have the ID badges, then we have to manage the ID badges. So we have to figure out which pieces are most important, are our priority.
Do the cameras need to be updated? I mean, are they like, okay, so that, a camera issue one way or the other is an issue?
Has to be updated, yes. We could forego the wireless access, which is 137,353, but then you also lose the health check. You lose that ability to be able to know that your camera's failing before you actually need the video.
Is it safe to say that $138,000, just rounded up to $138,000, over the next number of years could potentially be saved in that routing?
I don't know that we would.
But it would certainly offset probably a portion of that.
Absolutely.
Well, could we move away from the student attendance piece completely? And, I mean, I'm just, this is discussion, obviously. If there's, because I know from the get-go, there were gonna be a lot of issues with that. There still are. Now, maybe in five years or three years, maybe technology will change so much that it won't be. But is there a way to develop more savings? I mean, you know, we've been looked on the school security side at different avenues, not a digital camera, but you know, there's some very good analog-based cameras out there now that are significantly less cost. Could we examine that and maybe cut this down? I mean, I'm talking about 25%.
Certainly, I'm just not sure if they would have that wireless access with an analog. I don't know enough about the technology.
Well, I mean, I think if you could save $300,000 by going with a little different of a camera system, and then let's wait to get the student attendance in a couple of years, I mean, that would be an avenue that I would appreciate looking at.
We'd start to explore that, it's just that we would basically have to start from scratch, and then we would have to replace more units because they wouldn't be the same system. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Rather than 120, we'd be replacing 188 units, so that they would all use the same software to download and that kind of thing.
I think one of the misconceptions that maybe happened, and it's easy for, when consumers think of GPS, they're often thinking of a little thing when they're driving down the road that's telling them where to go. From your world, though, GPS has to do with tracking of a vehicle, whether that's historical data or live data, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's providing feedback to the driver or directions to the driver.
Because when you program your GPS or your phone, you give it an address, one address. We could have 30 bus stops on any route, so you'd have to be able to program in 30 locations and take you from one to the next, and it changes weekly. So if we have to, if Mr. Mullin calls me to put a student on the bus because they just moved into the area, I now have to go reprogram. It's just not feasible with the GPS that you would not use in our personal vehicles.
And there really is, so that the GPS that you do provide occasionally, I believe, to a substitute, I think you mentioned at one time, maybe there's, do you have a GPS or something?
That we do not.
Okay, so there's no GPS assisting of drivers at this time, and even under any of these options that are here, would not provide that?
I'm aware of one that currently has.
But I mean, it's not a cost factor at all, is what I mean by?
Other than to add to the very bottom, if we added that down the road.
But that's, so now you'd be adding another 200-plus thousand on top of the 600.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, now on top of the 600, on top of the 448, or is it 600?
Okay, okay.
Some have it coming. I only am aware of one that has it currently. And it does, and it does the ID badge entry for student attendance if you're still, if that's part of the puzzle.
But staff at this time is recommending doing the $448,000 option?
We need to upgrade the failing cameras, yes. I would like to have the wireless access simply for two reasons. One, it saves wear and tear on the video, because you don't pull the hard drive in and out, which reduces the number of failures. And two, you're alerted with that wireless system, you're alerted when the camera is failing before you actually need the video. So you have a chance to repair it before you have a school with a serious situation that they're trying to see and they can't.
And you can, I'm assuming, see more accurate information on the, as far as the clarity of?
Oh, yeah, the newer technology gets better and better, absolutely.
And so conceivably, when the bus drives to a school at a stop, it would be dumping that information or at the bus?
Each of the bus locations, of each of the bus compounds.
At each of the bus compounds. It would dump that information rather than you pulling that card and you can, okay.
And it would provide, kind of as just a bonus, it provides the historical GPS.
I'm very appreciative that you guys re-brought it to us, because I don't know that we had that same clarity and understanding of this. As one board member, I have great faith in what you have done in the past, and if you're telling me that's what we need, then I can support that, because I understand the camera needs, I understand the technology needs on the other side, but I definitely think that there's gonna be a lot more explored we have to do to have the other solutions. That would be my opinion.
I agree with Tom's.
I'd like to see another option, you know, what's out there.
Find a better camera.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I would really like to, you know, and maybe even this company that has the existing ones, you know, say, hey, listen, there's a little bit of doubt on this, what else do you have? Maybe they could come up with something and say, it's $100,000. I don't know, that's what I would prefer to do, but I'm only one vote, so that's what I feel.
I agree with Doug, I'd like to see some more. Maybe you could convince somebody to be a prototype.
We certainly can do that. We certainly can go out there and see what else is out there. We can see what happens if we start basically from scratch with all new cameras and go from there.
The board, though, has to realize that at some point, though, if there is not another analog camera that is less expensive, then we need to move on. We're gonna have to move on. And I think that's a fair, I think Doug's asking a fair thing, and I think that you probably can get that information and?
I do know the analog cameras we've had in the past that were very difficult. You can't see what happens in the back of a bus.
And maybe that will even, maybe it's another version of a camera. I mean, I don't know, maybe it's still a digital camera. I mean, you, you know, of course, I talk at the security team meetings about different things, and on the retail market, you know, it's pretty surprising what retail market is versus commercial market, commercial grade, but you know, I think it's worth looking at. And you know what? I think the student attendance piece still may be a little bit too far. I mean, we may not be advanced enough because of the issues with that. So while in, I mean, in the ideal world, it'd be great, right? But is it really something that we can move on?
Originally, Mr. Dodd, some of those school districts implemented that, they had biometric, the thumbprint, wasn't really a print, it was a five-point picture of their thumb, and they would use that and it was going quick. But then they, their statue down West Frederick, if I'm wrong, we can't do anything with biometric. So then, the only two methods that we're aware of is either the student will punch in a number, which a kindergarten is not gonna do that, or the bus driver punch in a number, which is just as slow as a fake attendance, or the student have the ID card. Can't go to high school, battle that, or, right? You gotta be willing to say, okay, then what are we gonna do when they don't show up with a card?
Right. And Marilyn, wasn't there some discussion on the new radios? Wasn't there an option for those to do some GPS?
They don't. They don't have that option because they don't have the bandwidth for the GPS.
Because we're?
We've looked at that. They don't have the capacity to handle that kind of bandwidth. But that doesn't mean it isn't coming.
Sure.
Technology changes every day, so we'll go back and we'll look at some other options, and we'll bring them forward in another workshop. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And then, you have policy review, Mr. Dix?
It's all white chalk, it's amazing.
Good afternoon. We have three workshops today for you. The first one is a revision of policy 5.321, bullying and harassment. This revision in section 4A and XB2 is based on staff recommendations of the Office of Safe Schools. And basically, we had had our consultant prepare policy language that included both staff members and students into one policy, and we broke out the language for staff, and it'll be coming forward as a separate policy. So this is just the student section, student piece. Draw your attention to page 6 of 14. There's some language there that's been inserted regarding the school bus. So Regina tells me these are things we already do. It's just for clarification, but it basically includes the incidents on the school bus. And then on page 11 of 14, regarding, on section 2 there, regarding how things are coded, and we already do that as well. And then there are no changes in the statute citations. Any discussion? Okay. The next item is a revision to policy 6.33, alcohol and drug-free workplace. This is recommended language in section 4 that's been added. And you can look over that and see if you have any concerns, but there are no statutory Again, this isn't language that was recommended by EMCS.
Let me ask you a question, it's on topic a little bit scant. If someone is on a legal drug, say a prescription drug, but is taking too many of those pills each day, where's that fall?
I don't know if it per se falls within the confines of this policy, but just so you know how that process works. If a staff member, I'm sorry, if administration feels a staff member is under the influence, there's a series of protocol that we engage a staff member, we make an assessment. If there seems to be three or more signs of being under the influence, that's considered like a reasonable suspicion. They contact HR. We send out the director of HR along with Ms. Royal. They then make the assessment if they feel that they're under the influence, they go and get tested. In the testing, in the drug testing, if it comes back positive, the medical review officer will then contact the employee directly. They don't contact us, they contact the employee, and they ask a series of questions about, are you on any type of medications? If so, what medications are you on? And then they look at saturation levels of that test result. If they have very elevated saturation levels in the test result, that can indicate abuse, and they will fail them on that drug test. Does that make any sense?
It does. Let me ask you, if it's a person taking a drug, you know, you change drugs, sometimes it changes you, changes the way you act. How is that dealt with? Say you're schizophrenic and you're taking a drug now for schizophrenia.
Yes, ma'am. When the medical review, when the drug test is taken, if it does test positive, the medical review officer will contact them, and they will ask them what drugs or what medications are you currently on? Have you changed, have you recently changed medications? And that is actually the doctor, the medical review officer is a doctor, and he or she will know the contradictions of those medications and the types of behaviors they could exhibit as a result of the transition from one medication to the other.
And just from another point, if you are taking like two medications and they conflict with one another, then you start acting differently. But the results of, let's say the person is reviewed and you find out the person is taking drugs that don't interact properly, then what do you do?
The medical review officer will make, then make a determination whether or not they have failed that drug test. All we know is either they passed or they failed. So the medical review officer will rely on their training and expertise to say, they are outside the scope of legal limits, if you will, and they'll fail them. If they fail them, then we handle it as a positive drug test.
And?
I think what you're trying to, maybe you're correct me a little wrong. The alcohol and drug-free workplace policy is designed so that people do not show up consecrated or can't afford produce. Now, if they're taking their prescription medicine as prescribed and everything. Now, if they're taking their prescription medicine as prescribed and everything, and the doctor changed their medicine, and they cause them some adverse effect, then we're going to work with them to make sure that their medicine gets readjusted to the fact, to the point where they can come back and work with it. Correct.
Say that one more time, please.
Well, if they're taking, if they're taking drug A and drug B, and the doctor says, instead of drug B, we're going to put you on drug C, you know, and it's part of the prescription, and they have an adverse reaction to it or whatever, we're going to work with them to get it back. It's not, it may technically be a violation of the policy, but...
But you're not going to fire them.
Right. I think this is more aligned where, you know, I got a bad back, I started taking hydrocodone, next thing you down on this 20 on the day, and I'm coming all loopy to the office, and it's a violation of this, and we work through that application. I don't think that would be a...
Right. And every case, and every case is a little different with all the different, I mean, I think we just do it on like five or six different circumstances.
Yeah, you get it.
It would be irresponsible of me to say, yeah, we're going to fire them, or no, we're not going to fire them. We have to look at those cases on an individual basis to...
We've had employees that not have their diabetic medication right and have been, we've had to send home or go get tested, just trying to get their diabetic medication worked out. That's, that's one example there.
And they still work for us.
That's correct, that's correct.
Once they're all figured out.
But that's what I was saying, because I remember working with someone who had that problem.
We don't try to make those medical decisions. I mean, there are those, as Mr. Bishop said, those are being made by a doctor. You know, there's a difference between getting the medicine balanced out or the right medicine for what they have as opposed to abusing the medication.
But if they fail it, it comes back as failed.
But a series of questions they ask before that to determine that.
The doctor will then have a consultation with that employee on the phone and have them answer questions to see whether or not their failure is as a result of abuse or is it a medical, a medical condition that has contributed to the, the...
Okay, all right, got it.
I just want to know that, because I remember working with someone who had a change in medication, and then, oh, my gosh, you know, but they were referred on to someone who adjusted the medication, and they were okay after that. So I was hoping we did the same thing.
And I can tell you, there's all, there's been times where the medical review officer has actually told the employee, there seems to be some sort of contradiction here, you need to go to your medical provider, your regular physician to get those things taken care of. So then that, that would not be a failed test.
Okay, thank you.
So if there are no further questions on that one, moving on to the last one, this is one that came about as a staff recommendation, a revision of policy 9.11, donations and gifts, basically to include the education foundation so that we don't have to slow down the donations because they routinely donate.
They routinely donate to teachers, and then also they'll pick up the cost of programs. We, I, I think we talked to the board about this a few months back and said it would just be more convenient and it wouldn't slow things down if we were able to put that as an exclusion in that policy.
And that looks okay, US, right, to exclude it? Yeah. Please check it.
I think there's nothing in statute that violates us from doing it. Board's okay with it.
It's true. Well said.
That's right.
Was it white for you or just follow Tom's just saying?
Well, this is just a workshop, so...
You'll tell a slider? Okay, good. It's a legal line.
That concludes the policy matters. Mr. Bradshaw's the final authority on all policies as far as whether they, everything goes to your office, stuff they wish. Everything eventually comes to your office in policy.
Or the courts.
That's what he's afraid of.
He's trying to keep his balance, yeah. He's the part of the five zero.
Thanks for that. Anyone need to add something? Let me, let me mention that on the 20, no, on February the 4th, Thursday, in town pass date 11:15, we have a meeting with Representative Smith.
Oh, I'm sorry, what was that being?
It's February the 4th, 11:15, it's Thursday.
February 4th.
11:15.
That's the Thursday.
Yeah, and he's a pre-17 policy.
At 11:30, you said?
11:15. And we're calling the one with Senator Dean that will be receiving this back again. Okay. Well, then, you'll email us if, if you receive some...
We'll just shut this down.
We can, yeah.
We can do that, and we've done that.
And we've done that. And we've put, we've done this, but is there anyone else who wanted to call or...
Well, I just wanted to bring up these couple of legislative things. I know some of you guys have been tracking this, but I think since we're going up there, this is the last meeting before we go up there. There's two joint resolutions right now that, that they're working on, and as you know, a joint resolution does not mean it becomes law at the end, it still has to go to the general election to be chosen. But we really need to keep our eyes on this, and what is the charter oversight? That has to do with the legislators are proposing that the charters, schools would be overs, the oversight of them would be taken away from local school boards and given to the Department of, of Education through the Board of Education, which would be then appointed boards would be overseeing those charters, including the private charters. That would be changing statute, I'm sorry, it would be changing the constitution, so therefore, that's what's requiring it to have constitutional amendment change. It did pass yesterday already, committee, in the Senate, I believe, and we really need to keep our eye on that. The other one is one that probably would defect citrus, but I would have anything passed, and that is the joint resolution that would break up school districts potentially and break them down into as small as cities. And it would also mean that it would not be local school board elections that would run those schools, but potentially it could be the school, the city councils that run those schools. I think we all know that some of the challenges and issues. The other is the best and brightest. One of the things, if you don't know, yesterday passed the Senate. Senator Lang is the one who this year ran, tried to run Plata, not because he supported it, but because he has concerns of it. He knew if he ran that bill, he had a better chance of having control of it as it moved through, rather than Fresen, who actually had run it in the House last year. I think we need to be concerned that this becomes the best and brightest 2.0, because what this new Senate's bill has is that, again, the reason they were doing this was supposed to get new teachers into the profession. It would exempt new teachers. First of all, in case everyone's wondering, I am not a huge fan of this bonus program, but it would exempt new teachers, so that would help. And it would lower now the S A T A C T to the 60th percentile, 70, 80th percentile. Now, here's the problem with that. While it's absurd to use S A T A C T to determine whether a teacher is an effective teacher or not, it like quadruples the number of teachers that would be qualified currently under that, the availability of them. It would also probably be, and there's going to be a lot of teachers who would say, well, if I'm only going to get into the 60th percentile, it's probably worth me going and taking a test. So now we know what is the next thing that they will have to be in order to qualify? They would have to be highly effective. I believe this then now puts our administrators and our UU's in a situation of saying, what we want is many highly effective teachers, teachers classified as highly effective so that they qualify for this. Again, none of this then is about entirely what is best for our students and how we deal with teacher shortages, but we really need to be watching the fact that the House wants to keep this this year, and I think there's a very good shot that we're going to get this bright, best of brightest 2.0. And then I would just tell you that I'm going to send to Linda a copy of email, I think you have received it from me, but I would just ask you to, to peruse it again before you go up to the legislature. I have been on a mission that I believe there, there is a flaw in our statute with regard to P E credit. And Doug, you, you can appreciate this also from, from a coach. In the law, if you go and take J O R T C, you are exempt from being the physical education, I'm not talking about the health department, just the physical education department. If you're in marching band, you are exempt. I support those, I favor those. You can get an exemption if you do two consecutive competition sports, but only, only if you take a competency test. You cannot get the exemption in your use of the sports except through a competency test. Not the case with J O R T C, not the case with band. Now, here's the other thing. If our students take one of our health courses, as we hope they do, they can't take that option whatsoever and take a competency test, even if they were able to. All they need to do is give the same equal access to competition sports kids that they do to the other ones. I just, it, it's, it's a, it's really a no-brainer to anyone who has kids, anyone who's been involved in sports.
Yeah, but if he cares about children.
So if you march in the band, you don't have to go to the football stadium. If you play football for four years, you got to get a...
You got it. And if you took a health exam, you took the health course as a freshman, you are ineligible to have any, to do the exemption anyway. By the way, it's extremely difficult to even pass competency, health competency test, in case you're wondering about, it's an extremely difficult test. So I just would say, it's just something, the legislators I have talked to, the chairmen of this, of the educational committee I've talked to, they all are like, yeah, we see it. Nothing is changed. And, and the statutory change is a very minimal language. So I just, since we're going up there, I just wanted to point that out, so.
I can sort of answer that, again, going back to what I'm saying tonight. But I had to, in order to get a hang of tennis in college, I had to beat best player on the boys' team. No one chance that I had.
Well, that was a pretty good fact.
Yeah, so I know it should be impossible.
Yeah, it's just ridiculous. So I, I hold that out to you because, again, we will be needing acceptance of the work. Look forward to seeing you all.
And before she turns over some of her, 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 you know, as a joint, we know it's really not the center of the, of, 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 of,
I mean, is that something that, I mean, the impact fee issues are probably the biggest, right?
And we asked you that.
What else could we discuss with them? What are some other things? We stay away from the trash, which I hope we can, I mean, I don't, you know, I think we're in a position right now, we're in the driver's seat with that, at least with the last court hearing or the last finding, right?
On appeal.
Right. So what are the other issues? Are we going to talk about planning new schools, do you think? What are they going to?
That was a question.
What about, I spoke to Mr. Oliver early on, in all his schools, thinking about it, and he said, we don't really know what you're doing, you know, which you're busting out for the next five, which is, if you only have five-year work plan here, you know, for you to read, and so I'm not quite sure, something related, and then he really had, did not have a good understanding of how, we've only got a very small control over our taxes and how we tax and funding, that we can, everything else is set by the state, and, you know, we've only got that little bit of window where we can, I'm giving the impression that we just raise everything a bill to create, create more revenues, you know, and what are the other issues that have obviously been changed?
Yeah.
You know, what impact would a county school, which is part of, you know, actually come to, to, I can't, when Chuck was telling me now that it was cutting over the Canto, right, and go to Jacksonville, maybe be a feeder for I-75, so obviously, if that type of traffic starts coming through the county, it's going to fund a change, such as county or area.
Well, there are a number of issues out there that will affect the future growth of the county, the biggest being the Suncoast Parkway, which is definitely going to start in July and probably be built within three years. And then now they're talking about the I-75 relief task force, which is looking to find a way to relieve traffic on I-75 south of Gainesville, and there's been talk about it going eventually to Jacksonville, but, you know, if that comes to fruition, then they're in all likelihood, the Suncoast Parkway would go on north and intersect some point below, probably around Williston or below Williston, and create a relief for the traffic jam that they currently have between Catala and Gainesville. And the timeframe for that is anybody's guess, because it's a project that's just come off the radar within the past year, but it seems to be, I mean, I was at the meeting on this past week, and it seems to be on the fast track, so. But, you know, we have made a lot of plans for the provincial growth of the county that are in line with what might happen, but then the work plan, we don't have anything in the five-year work plan, but we do have the Floral City master plan update, which is getting ready to start, and that's part of our plans for future growth. We do have plans in there to increase the capacity of Floral City in the next 10 years, up to 500 and something students, and eventually to 810 students in 20 years, so the problem that we've had with our work plan is that the state has projected our enrollment so low that the projects that were in the five-year window have been moved out, but now that things are starting to turn around, you know, next year's work plan will probably have a different picture than the last year's work plan did.
And, Mr. Dixon, one of the things that I noticed, some recent conversation in reviewing some of our impact fee documents and conversation is, I do think the board county commission has been not, that they mean to have the wrong perception, but I think they have been given the wrong perception, that we have a great deal of portals throughout our school district, and that we are somehow not utilizing them. Now, this board, I have great, again, admiration, before I came on here, you all were getting rid of those for a variety of reasons, among others, it was what's best for students, because that's not the word anymore. We have a very limited, I don't, I mean, I think I can count on my hand, classroom-designated portals. Yeah, so I would just, and I say this for information, that we are aware that we don't have that number. And then the other one, Mr. Dixon, and it's, there was a report in the media that somehow this, this capital expenditure that we have made to the YMCA was indicated that we have some excess of capital funds. What I think the misunderstanding is, is, and I know this board knows this, but that that cost is not only for the use of that pool as a facility for swimming and others, but largely, if not probably the larger, is that the YMCA will be providing our swim safety program for how many years?
25.
25 years. That is a massive expense relief, relief to this district, that is an enormous release to us, and the fact that we can public-private do that, which is something we're encouraged by the public to do, I just remind us, only because there is misconceptions out there. I trust this board, I know, we all know each other on this, but those have been some really inappropriate...
So you will have a copy of our work plan, and obviously...
We have eight portals.
We have eight portals. So you all have a copy of the five-year plan in case they ask us for our five-year plan, I mean, by that...
And if they're going to come in that public city?
No, I think they're...
Five-year city, thank you.
I think Chuck's going to bring one, you'll bring a copy.
But three elsewhere.
And it's on our webpage, too.
But, I mean...
Yes, I'll...
Thank you. And you'll be willing to speak if they start throwing their attacks at us?
We will speak if the chair asks us to, like I said, it's a tall workshop. Can I say the chair?
Yeah.
We're there for the board.
Procedurally, though, as my correction, we should then, if that's a concern or a question we think our staff should ask, that we would ask our chair to maybe see if there's somebody in our staff that would address that.
I think that'd be the right way to go.
Mr. Bradshaw, are you going to be there? I don't want to call.
Very good.
The city's one bar, the city councils, or at least the city, city mayor, official leaders.
See, what makes no sense with that is it's supposed to be, it's referred to as an elective leader summit, but the other council, the city council members do not appear to be going, and the city managers aren't elected.
I mean, you bring the ball, you get to pick.
It's really good.
Well, and maybe if they ask us for any of our issues or concerns, I mean, maybe the school board issue and discuss with the legislature right now would be something we could have suggested them on.
Absolutely, yeah. I think those are some valid things, maybe you don't understand that, but...
I think that that will, I think that'd be a part of, I believe, because although it sounds good, I think what people sort of really retain, except like your huge metropolitan areas, is where they're going to attract you, but you know, what will happen, if you're going to have your own, you know, properly, high-land areas that will, you know, they almost get back to where you've got to be uniformed across all the, all the districts, and you, as board members and board members, understand, let's, you know, the school budget, running a DSE program, facilities, maintenance, all the governmental mandates and replaced departments, and I don't understand how, if you're smaller, you know, municipalities can absorb, how staff, I think it's tremendous how the staff can, to, to, to... Maybe voted in for a short period of time, but I don't think it's going to go...
But if you look at our district, I mean, 15,000 students, I mean, you can see some of these large districts, they have 100,000 students, they could say, you know, you can divide a district, you know, up to a certain point, anything, if you have more than 40,000 students, or they could come up with that, because, I mean, we've got a pretty nice-sized school district here, and I mean, I can't, you know, Hillsborough, Broward, Dave, I mean, just...
It's a constitutional, it has to be, it has to be, each county shall be a school district.
Yes, they are, they are.
They have various superintendents, you know, Miami-Dade, those, they have the greatest superintendents, so they have this, but our district staff, they have a staff like that, but they, but they do that internally as far as the school board has, yeah, they have glorified areas, Miami-Dade, Broward does that also, it's a, you know, the areas, secret areas.
And you get to a certain point where too small, it is expensive, too, just look at our two, you know, elementary schools, we spend more money per student on those schools to staff them, because you still need your basic mental resources, so there is an economy of scale to a certain extent, with a certain size.
Board members, the recess, there's a bill right now, if you don't know, to make a mandatory 30 minutes, 30 minutes or 20 minutes, a day of recess time. It passed committee, instruction to correct, it passed committee today, and I would say, because while that sounds great, I'm a huge fan of unrestricted, you know, unrestricted playtime, but keep in mind, they mandated to us already 30 minutes of continuous physical activity time each day in the state. Now that will move that to an hour, and again, it's not our schools that are deciding this, it isn't our teachers, and it's not our school boards that are deciding it, it is the legislators that have now taken 50 minutes, add that to the already reading intervention requirements that they require, they're pretty much have dictated, you know, almost four of the day away by just bare legislation. So my theory is to tell it to our legislators, why don't you start by unrestricting the 30 minutes that you already did, let us have that as unrestricted time, and let us decide what needs to be done, so.
When you hear this proposed, you're saying, you're charging us, you're just taking your cents.
You're gaining traction.
Oh, yeah, well, they sound good, you know, like you're going to play, like, unrestricted time, it's good, it's a, it's a...
Have an hour for lunch.
Well, if you...
Every hour.
You buy that.
Probably 40 minutes, 40 minutes, yeah.
But now when the kids get 20?
Yeah.
I got 15.
Right. We got a good one. We got seven periods, but you know, you didn't have all of the mandates and stuff.
I know. Director, yes, I need to speak to you as soon as this is over. Okay, anything other than comments?
No, thank you, board chair.
Oh, thank you very much. You're all over the nation. Okay, we're...
We're a...
Alright.